Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectments meeting for May 24, 2016. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded. All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded. All in favor? Department head, committee chair, updates. Town clerk vacation request?
You sound surprised to see that on there.
Yeah.
Well, I figured you'd almost start the meeting off with a bang. So, I have a little timeline that I wanted to go over with you guys, and I know that the personnel policy in general is going to be discussed next week at our workshop, but as far as me as an employee, I've got, I have a time issue. So, as you know, based on the personnel policy, I have four weeks of vacation. My fiscal year is the same as the town's because I started in June when the town took over, I started at the same time as the fiscal year. So, at the end of June, I'm going to lose four weeks of vacation. Based on your personnel policy, you're, for any employee that's been there more than 10 years, which I have, you will buy back two weeks. I am here to, I guess, talk about two different things. First of all, I want to go over the assistant history in the last fiscal year. I think that before that is really irrelevant because we've dealt with each year as they've happened. But the last assistant that I had in the office started in June of 2014, so she hit her one-year anniversary in June of 2015, right, when the fiscal year started and my new year started. In the past, the selectmen, we have always, we haven't trained anybody until they've gotten to about that one-year point because, A, we wanted to make sure that they were competent and capable of staying, and B, we didn't want to do it too soon to have them leave. So, she hit a year anniversary in July. The next motor vehicle training for her would have been in October of 2015, was the next time that motor vehicles had a class, and then in December of '15, she took a job at another town. So, that's the first half of the fiscal year. The second half of the fiscal year, going from January to June, we have a new assistant who we, who began in September of '15. She, however, did training in the treasurer's office through February of '16, so she just started training in my office in March. So, I'm here as an employee to ask you to cash out all four weeks of my vacation. I feel like the vacation is out of my control, that I'm not able to take it, and I think that I'm entitled to it. You know, and with that being said, if the board is, if that's something the board's willing to do, I guess I'm hoping that we can come to an agreement for the next year, you know, once we get this new assistant trained, which, you know, she started in March of '16. I've checked with motor vehicles, the next training is not until October of '16. Although Michelle is wonderful for an efflux day here and there, which, you know, I try to take, she can't leave shapely, you know what I mean, she can't leave both jobs to cover that office. So, if we go on the same track that we're going with this employee, or for whatever reason that happens that way, we're going to have to just consider closing, because I'm sure you don't want to continue to buy it out, but at the same time, I feel like I'm entitled to it.
Okay, but you still, you've, in the past, you've taken a day here and there during the summer.
I can take a flex.
Use your flex time for that.
We have, well.
So, you want, you want the full four weeks, is what you're asking?
Yeah, I still have, I have 25 hours of flex time.
That doesn't go away at the fiscal year, does it?
Yes.
That's not carried over?
Yeah, five days per fiscal year accrued as of July 1, so five days times eight hours, so 40 hours, so I've taken 15 hours of flex time in the last, since July 1. I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's difficult to take, and these are some of the conversations we'll have next week in the personnel part, but...
And you'll get four more weeks on July 1, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we buy out the four weeks.
Sergeant.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other department heads have anything they want to bring up?
Good evening, everyone. Probably some people noticed in town that I've been working on Goose Pond Road. We've, we've cleaned out probably like 250 yards of winter sand and getting ready for the new pavement on that. I just got them nailed down, so they should be paving on Thursday, paving that road. And Jennifer, we just, we finally got our signs there last, a week or so ago, and they're just about all up now, but all my 911 signs are done for the fire department and the emergency, they're all done, and I got, I got to order some more posts. So, I was going to talk to Jennifer probably tomorrow, whatever, but we can write it down. We can get another 25 coming for some more corner signs and stuff like that, so, that's my update.
Can I just ask them a quick question since you're talking about road signs? Do mine? Is Raccoon Road your road?
Raccoon, yes, it's private.
It's private, but it's on your side?
Yes.
So, I had, I had an individual come in today to do some town business, and I always try to confirm the address that they're at, and he said that on each end of Raccoon Road, that Raccoon, that we're, that we spell it differently on each side, and he was curious. I mean, he didn't know what the proper way of spelling was, because there are...
Is one end shapely?
No, one C or two. It's, and I'm not saying, I mean, he says they've been up there for, one of the signs has been up there for, he quoted, 25 or 30 years, so it's long before anybody here. I just, I don't want to say I found it funny, but I found it interesting that it might, you know what I mean? So, can you just look?
Which ones he thinks spelt wrong?
Well...
The old one or the new one?
I spell Raccoon with one C, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's saying that one has one C and one has two C. He just kind of, and I promise I'd mention it, I didn't know whose side it was, so...
I'll take a look at it.
Just for curiosity.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Starting next, next Wednesday, Thursday, we're planning on shutting down part of Youngs Ridge Road. We're going to be replacing the culvert up on Wilson Lake, the dam. We've got the culvert head walls poured and everything, so we're on our way on that. So, I'm going to be in contact with you guys, let you know that that will be shut down. It's right now tentatively dependent on weather, obviously. We're going to be dealing with the lake and the water coming through and all that, so...
Are you talking like several days, or?
No, it's, hopefully, it's only going to be shut down for no more than eight hours.
Oh, okay.
That's what, we're hoping to have the culvert in by the time we establish, you know, get everything secure and all that. But, like I said, Dave, I'll be in contact, what day exactly it's going to be. There's going to be some setup time, so that's going to be getting, taken care of. And Scott and I have talked, yeah, we're going to go down tomorrow and take care of the shed.
Oh, great.
We're going to take care of it tomorrow, so, other than that, I think that's it.
All right, thanks, Dave.
Ted, Mr. Point was just so wonderful to point out, just so we know, any of us don't get any calls, Raccoon has two Cs is the proper spelling, so we're looking for...
So, we don't change the, change the, so they're both spelled wrong?
Just as I said, I spell Raccoon, right, I spell Raccoon with one C. Thank you, Paul, it's two Cs, so...
Did you ask Siri that, Paul?
He just probably knew.
She confirmed it, but I was a little skeptical about the one.
Okay, all business. Warrant article recommendation, Article 53 and Article 57.
Unless I'm mistaken, those are the only two that you tabled, does that sound right?
Yes. Okay, and we have a answer from, on the question from MMA?
Well, are we doing 53 first? I'm sorry, I wasn't...
57, oh, 57 is this, is...
Yes.
The one from MMA?
Right.
Yeah, okay, 53. And we changed that because we were asking to appropriate funds that we don't need to appropriate, correct? So, we did it, we changed it back to the way we did it before.
Yeah, Michelle sent you all, Michelle sent you all an email, you had a question about one of the road accounts, I thought it was, but...
Oh, the LRAP, yep, yep. We weren't carrying that forward because it's asked for in a different article, so, under the paving article, so we are using that money, but if she, if she asked to have it appropriate here, then we'd be appropriating the money twice, so that's, that's why she did it that way.
But carried for, but not appropriated.
Right, so the LRAP one that we questioned last week is because there's another article for the paving for each of you guys, and the LRAP money's included in that figure, so that's, that's why that's written that way. So, Article 53, "To see if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances and allow the balance carried forward to be appropriated to the designated department for the ensuing year. Acton Tree Lighting Donation Fund, Cemetery Fund, Conservation Committee, District 1 and 2 Road Surfacing and Reconstruction Reserve Funds, District 1 and 2 Summer Maintenance Reserve Funds, District 1 and 2 Winter Maintenance Reserve Funds." Brought back, what's...
It wasn't on there last year.
Okay. Fire Department Grants, Donations and Scholarships, FEMA Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund, Forestry Committee, Fuel Assistance Donations, Gravel Processing, Jim Donations, Mary Grant Committee, Neighbors Helping Neighbors Donations. And to carry forward but not appropriate these following fund balances. Ambulance Reserve Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, Dams Capital Improvement Fund, Fire Department Capital Improvement Fund for the truck, Recreation Capital Improvement Fund, Load, Road Capital Improvement Fund, LRAP Funds, and all other unexpendited fund balances and revenues to lapse into the undesignated fund. Lapse, school balances to be designated for school funding only. Board of Selectmen recommends a motion. A motion for Article 53.
I move that we approve Article 53.
I second it.
Is that as written? As written, Bill?
As written, I'm sorry.
I second it. All in favor?
Can we discuss it?
Oh, sure.
Sure, I just want to discuss the warrant finances committee recommendations.
Yeah, okay.
You know, they think they had some, some points there. I don't know if Larissa wants to come up and explain that to us a little more, or...
If you'd like, if you're happy to.
I'd, I'd like it, yeah, please. And you had some points last night at the meeting as to why...
Let's find on here, right?
The recommendation was made last night, is it on their draft that they have in front of them?
Yes.
Okay, so Larissa Crockett, I chair your warrant finance committee this year. Our committee recommended removing the accounts that are purely donation accounts, that are places where the town is holding money for non-government agencies. That would include gym donations, it would include your tree lighting donations, and there's a list that we list in our recommendation that we gave. Those are monies that the town meeting has no business in. They are not monies that are done, that are added to through taxation. They are not monies that the town has the authority to appropriate to anyone other than the designated beneficiaries of those donations, or the agents to give those out. So, the suggestion was that just for kind of cleanliness of the warrant, to not put forward a town meeting things that the town meeting has no governance of, and so we recommended, hi, we recommended that they simply be removed and no longer be featured on the warrant. Does that answer your question, Ed?
Pretty much, yes.
Just to make sure my minutes are right, though, I, you guys took out the District 1 and 2 Summer Maintenance and Winter Maintenance as well.
Additionally, yes, so additionally, we recommended that the annual appropriation for Summer Maintenance and Winter Maintenance no longer be rolled forward, that they be kind of a, use the money in the season as needed, what is not needed, therefore, heads back into the undesignated fund, hopefully to offset taxation the following year, and to have the only remaining fund, reserve fund be for paving, because paving, of course, is really dependent on weather and dependent, so let's say that we've got paving planned on Goose Pond, okay, so it's going to be a great job, but it rains for the next 50 days. So, the monies that have been appropriated to do that work in fiscal year '16 shouldn't disappear because we had rain, that Scott has, you know, planned a project and wants to execute it. If he has to wait and execute it after the fiscal year has changed because of poor weather or because the paving company can't be contracted, then that shouldn't be lost. But for Summer Maintenance and Winter Maintenance, instead of having things just kind of roll over, which isn't as transparent as perhaps we would like to have in our budgeting process, that that money be sent back to the undesignated fund. So, they're two different issues, but in the same recommendation.
Okay, but that's not what it says here on the recommendation, right? Have we not typed their full recommendation in?
I thought I did, I mean, to amend the article as follows, they made it, it was five to nothing, five to one, "To see if the town will vote to carry forward the following fund balances and allow the balance carried forward to be appropriated," and I've listed Cemetery Fund...
Okay, done, okay, all this is their, their recommendation.
That's all part of it, I took out the ones...
Okay, I got you, okay, I got you now. Okay.
And the only other one, you had winter, District 1 and 2 Winter Maintenance, that didn't show up on the bottom at all.
Right, so Winter Maintenance and Summer Maintenance are, we took both of those out. So, in the past, we had, the Winter Maintenance, the idea behind Winter Maintenance was that if we had a really light winter, and therefore, there wasn't a lot of plowing that was needed, that we could roll that money over as a buffer for a heavy winter in the future. It was brought up last night that really, we don't need to do that because of the state law allowing for an overage, but also that it isn't as clear for budgeting purposes, like we need to know, instead of just rolling things over, we need to know, are we not budgeting enough? Are we budgeting too much? And so, it just allows the town body, while they're making budgeting decisions, to have a clearer picture of what is needed and what is not needed.
Okay, thank you.
So, I don't know if that's something we want to consider changing our...
Well, I know Michelle told me the reason that she has these donation funds on there are purely for housekeeping, and I won't tell you what, well, actually, well, she said that she ever wins the Mega Bucks and leaves the town, she wants everybody, she wants everybody to know what those accounts are and where they are, and they're also there for auditing purposes so that money isn't fixed. So, for her, to bring it up once a year, and then if people have questions about it, that's the way she would like to keep it in there, and that's why she's got it in there that way. Okay? And as far as the carryovers, we've been, you know, adding those in the last five years, this board has, in order to make things work better. As far as having a, a bad year in the winter, we did that last year, and had to go to the town twice.
That's happened a couple times.
Yeah, and we had to go to the town twice because we did our 15%, and then we had to get that approved because we had to go 15% again. This year was very, you know, wasn't as bad, so there is some money left over.
This year was a special year.
Right, so by doing that, you know, by carrying those money, that money over in that account, we don't have to up the money because we have a bad year last year, and we, if we had upped it to what we did last year, because we went up almost over $100,000 last year, correct? Between the two votes?
Well, we did, but we didn't, the second time, I think we appropriated quite a bit, but we only used a fraction of it.
Because it was in like April, right?
It was late year, yeah, it was late in the year.
It was like April when we went back, so...
Yeah.
By, by carrying that money over, and assault and sand is, you know, is always going to be weird, we're never going to be able to get that. I mean, we went up, what, 40,000 last year, Scott?
Moving targets.
Yeah, we went up 40,000 last year, and we still didn't, still didn't make it, right?
Okay.
So, that's why I, I still believe we should carry those funds over, and of course, with the other recommendation there by warrant and finance, the town can make their decision on which way they want us to keep doing it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so any more discussion?
Not for me.
All right, all in favor of approving Article 53 as written?
Yeah.
And opposed? Okay, all right, Article 57, right? Yeah. All right. So, Article 57, "To see what sum the town will vote to raise to appropriate for the following estimated revenues and fund balances to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation during the tax commitment. Fiscal year 2016, 2017 municipal revenues are $636,400," and Michelle thinks that's a very good number, and that's what it should be. Municipal Undesignated Fund Balance, we had recommended 300,000, up to 300,000, but the up to didn't get put into the warrant as it has in the last three years, so we tabled this because we wanted it to be added to up to. Now, the warrant and finance committee recommends appropriate $401,200 from the Undesignated Fund and $636,400 from the fiscal year 2016, 2017 municipal revenues, and that's a six yes and zero no vote. We asked MMA if they can do that, and it says, "I have consulted with two of my colleagues, dear Jennifer, here, and we all agree that Article 57 appears to be an open-ended article, and the warrant and finance committee could recommend an amount higher than the proposed by the selectmen. If the warrant has not yet been signed, or has not been signed yet, however, and if the selectmen wish to limit the total appropriation possible, they could reward the article to read. To see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $636,400 from the fiscal year 2016, 2017 municipal revenues, and up to 300,000 from municipal undesignated fund balance to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation during the tax commitment. The warrant and finance committee's recommendation should still appear below the article with an explanation that parts of it exceeds the amount of that could lawfully be appropriated under the above article." So, a motion, and then we'll discuss?
I don't want to make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we, well, I really don't want to make it, that we approve it, because I don't think I approve it, but I want to be able to discuss it.
I make a motion that we rewrite the article according to the recommendation of the legal service department at MMA.
Sergeant.
Okay, discussion.
I think warrant, actually, let's have Larissa come back up and explain why...
That's, warrant and finance has already done their thing, this is between us, this is us making a decision on our warrant.
Sure it is, and I have a question for Larissa, I'd like to know how they come up with the 401,200.
Okay.
The warrant and finance committee came up with that number. We have a couple of other articles that we have recommended be lower than are written in the warrant, and the, they would be the, the front walkway entrance for the library, as well as the siding and fire stairs warrant article. Both of those articles are written to be funded from the Undesignated Fund, so our increase includes the amount of money that would not be needed to fund those if our recommendation were to pass. So, that would be money that was supposed to come out of the Undesignated Fund to pay for something, that if our recommendation passes, does not need to pay for something, and so therefore should be used, in our opinion, to offset taxation. The second part of that comes from our recommendation that the Winter Maintenance and Summer Maintenance Funds no longer be carried forward. The balance, we expect the Summer Maintenance Funds for both districts to be about zero, so we took what was left in the Winter Maintenance Fund, and we added it to that number to come up with a total of 401,200, I believe, is the, is the recommended number that we came up with. And I guess if I may, I would say that the email from MMA was not a recommendation, but simply an option if the board wishes to, to do so.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion?
I don't know, I think we may want to think about changing that 300. If, if some of those articles don't pass, does it make sense to take that money and put it in towards the, towards the budget?
Well, what you're doing then is you're using your savings account to pay your monthly bills. We are told by the auditors that we should keep at least three months' worth of bills, which is over $1 million. So, with this recommendation, see, by asking for the money for those, for those projects from the Undesignated Fund, we're asking for approval to do that, but once we get the town, the tax evaluation for the town, and once we see how much money is left this year in the Undesignated Fund on July 1, which you know, we, we do the taxes in June, we don't know that we're going to have $400,000 and still be able to keep the, the tax rate, I mean, the, the Undesignated Fund at over $1 million. So, at that time, we would choose not to fund, you know, either the siding, or the front walkway, or the roof on the fire station, or whichever one we decide is, is the least important, because we need that money. But if you take that, and say we have to put this $400,000 if the town votes those other articles down, then that means we're going to take it. Now, if you remember, when we came in, well, Bill and I came in in 2010, you came in in 2011, the Undesignated Fund had $500,000. $350,000 of that was unpaid taxes, so we actually had $150,000 in cash. These warrants we signed today are more than $150,000, so any week. So, in 2010, because of the 2008 breakdown and everything else, so this Undesignated Fund, even though it's over $1 million, is not all cash. We, the school budget, when they have an Undesignated Fund, it's all cash, but when the town has an Undesignated Fund, it includes all back taxes. Now, in that year, in 2010, there was over 100 people, 100 families in town that received notice of foreclosure, because it was a real bad time. So, we need to have that bank account in case people don't pay their taxes. We just got tax bills for April, how many, how many notices do we have to send out?
I just sent out reminder letters for probably 400 people.
400 people haven't paid their April taxes yet, so by having that $1 million in the Undesignated Fund, that's cash in the bank that we can use to pay our bills. So, my thought is, we do up to 300,000, that way, if we can do it, if we need to do it, but the other thing is, is we haven't taxed the townspeople for the budget from last year, so if we start putting $400,000 forward, and we don't have 400,000 next year, then the tax rate's going to go through the roof next year, and it might go down a little bit this year, because we already have bills that are on the budget for the fire station, I mean, the fire and ambulance, and we have the payment for the salt shed that's on there. Now, we did go up on the taxes a little bit last year, but not enough to cover that full $1 million that the town approved to sell, to spend last year. So, we plan on going up a little bit more this year. This is us discussing an article, we'll have time in the end for you to come up and talk if you'd like. So, that's my feeling, and if you don't have any more discussion, we can vote on the article.
I'd like to hear what Larissa has to say. Apparently, it has something to do with the article.
Well, this is us voting on our recommendations for our warrant.
True.
And the warrant and finance already had theirs, and...
I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a warrant finance member.
Well, you can at the end of the, I mean, when it's time for citizens, right now, we're having a discussion for us to make our recommendations. Larissa, thank you.
I think that's wrong, because I like to gather as much information as I can before I vote, but go ahead.
All right, go ahead, Larissa.
No, no.
Go ahead, I disagree.
Larissa Crockett, resident, not warrant finance. I think that the question on the table is more philosophical and not so much about exact numbers. By changing the wording of the article, you are handcuffing the town meeting to only be allowed to approve up to the 300,000. The way that the article is currently worded, the town meeting, the primary governing body of the Town of Acton, is allowed to decide for itself, through discussion, at the town meeting, what it would like to do. And if the select board votes to change the wording on this article, two things. One, as I said, it limits the ability of the town meeting to fully do its job. Secondly, it is changing the warrant article, which means that the warrant and finance committee will need to re-meet, to re-recommend.
It's not changing the article that we've used for the same, for the last five years, and that's the reason that we did it, is so that we have the ability to make the decision once we know what the valuation of the town is, and all of the bills, and how much money is left, then the selectmen can make that decision after the town meeting, because we don't commit taxes until July. So, I think we should still do it the same way that we've always done it, and I think that's part of what our job is here, is to make the best recommendations we can to the town, and the warrant and finance can make their recommendations, and then the town can make the decision. But as far as going below the $1 million in the Undesignated Fund, by, which we don't know whether it will or not, but I mean, if, if we took that 400,000 right now, it would, because we're only at 1.2. So, we'd be down at 800,000 with, we don't know how much is in unpaid taxes, and we won't have that cushion that it took us five years to build, so. I think we should continue to ask the town the same way we've always asked them, and...
Which one of the two articles do you want to do? You want to do what warrant finance, I mean, what MMA has recommended, or what we have printed on the article right now?
Well, what, what they've recommended is, because warrant and finance has already made an article, is to vote, appropriate up to on the 636,400, and up to on the 300,000. We've never done the up to on the 636,400, because that's always a number that Michelle gives us, and we go with that, but...
Can I just make sure Ed's clear on, that Ed and Bill are clear on one thing?
Yeah.
So, if you, if you leave the article alone, the way it is, then the townspeople will have the choice at town meeting, or to appropriate the warrant and finances committee's amount. If you change the article, like MMA is saying, then they will not have that right. They will only be able to do the up to 300,000 based on Ted's facts, so that's the difference between the two articles.
Yeah.
And if the warrant comes out, it's going to be...
Yeah, and as of last week, I mean, we just had some clarification on 57, it didn't look like there was going to be a lot of problems with it, so, okay.
Ready to vote?
I'm all set.
Okay, so, the motion is to...
Your motion was to go with MMA's recommendation.
Right.
Sergeant.
We already did second it, so now we're going to vote. All in favor? Opposed? Okay.[1776.54]
Okay.
So, how does that work with Warren and Finance and their recommendation?
Well, according to this, it says, "The Warren and Finance Committee's recommendation should still appear below the article, but with an explanation that part of it exceeds the amount that could lawfully be appropriated on the above article." So we just add that to the, to the article. Okay? All right. So we will add that tomorrow, and what's our deadline? When do we have to sign?
I was scheduled to be signed tonight. I, I just want to make sure, I mean, do you think that the email to MMA was clear as to the Warren and Finance? Because we can, you can make a vote, since you voted on all articles, you can make a vote to sign the warrant, and I can, you know, prep it and just bring it right out to you to sign.
Yeah.
But, and I'm not...
Yeah, they wrote, they wrote the article right out, to see if the town vote to appropriate 636,400 from fiscal year 2016-2017, and up to 300,000 from the municipal undesignated fund balance, to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation during the tax commitment. So that's what we just voted two for and one against.
No, I understand that, I just want to make sure that, that the piece to Maine Municipal was clear about, are we certain that Warren and Finance doesn't have to relook at the article based on the ordinance? I just want to make sure they don't, you know what I mean? Can we hear what...
They read the ordinance, and it says, "The Warren and Finance Committee's recommendation should still appear below the article, but with an explanation that part of it exceeds the amount that could lawfully be appropriated on the other article."
And if you vote to change it.
Yeah, and you told them that we had a deadline, and, uh...
Sign the warrant at 5:00, yeah?
Yep, you said you had a deadline to sign the warrant at 5:00 today, and they didn't say anything about it having to go back to the Warren and Finance Committee. Okay?
Now, the part in there about, let me get back here for a second. The part in here about lawfully, the amount that could lawfully be appropriated, that is where, on town floor, it could be changed, but where we voted with what we voted,
It cannot be changed.
It cannot be changed.
Can't be changed, uh, it can't be changed up, it can be changed now.
Yeah.
So you can only appropriate no more than 300,000?
Right.
So what would happen then, if the rest of the Warren and Finance articles pass? They, they go by the Warren and Finance recommendations, and they don't pay for the stairs, and they don't pay for the, finish the siding on the building, and they don't pay for the fire escape? Then that money just stays in the end, doesn't need to fund.
Right, it just saves money, and, and we still can go up to 300.
Right.
Yeah.
And that'll be based on what we know we need in order to keep the tax rate at a good level for this year. Okay, so, next thing. Old sand and salt shed.
Based on the conversations that we had this morning, but it sounds like David answered it, you wanted to discuss or clarify when that was gonna be done, out of which budget?
Yeah, the, um...
Right, but that was after you told him not to mention the things down bottom, so it was already on the agenda, what was I gonna say? I had to...
Yeah, you've been, Jennifer talked to you guys and told you where the money's gonna come from, from the winter maintenance, and you're just gonna move all the salt and sand into the new building, and you guys are gonna do it tomorrow? All right, great. And then we block it off until, um, July, when we get the new funding, so that we can tear it down?
We, unfortunately, the old salt shed, the little one there, is sitting on top of the barricades we need to put. Scott and I are gonna try to move that tomorrow at some point out to the sand. So, uh, so that'll be it, we'll end up having to do that to get to our barricades, to get that done, so.
Okay.
So we don't have to buy anymore.
All right, thanks, Dave. MMA action plan?
I believe, knock on wood, we are good, we're just waiting for final approval from Rick or Dave that those sirens actually work over there, that he installed, and as soon as we get that, we can turn it back over to Lance. I think protection, American Security was just out last week, the end of the week, so they haven't had a chance to try them yet.
So they just put exterior sirens on the ambulance building?
Yes.
You don't have anything that goes off inside the fire station, just the sirens?
It was never wired to that.
Okay, firefighter paramedic position, you guys want to fill us in on that?
Yeah, we, we went through the process to hire a full-time firefighter EMT. Through the process, we're actually able to hire a firefighter paramedic. So it was a great honor from the Fire Department. I'd like to introduce Sharon Jackson, who is the person that we picked for the firefighter paramedic position. What this is gonna do, come up Sharon, for some people that don't know you. Sharon is a well-seasoned paramedic, she is a firefighter one and two. So, she's a great candidate for a position, she's grown up in the town, been a part of the town for a good chunk of her life. This is gonna give us a firefighter paramedic for 40 hours a week guaranteed, which is amazing for when our people need that kind of service. Top level of medicine that you can get in the state of Maine, and one of the highest levels of firefighter training that you can get in the state. And we're gonna have Ms. Jackson with us 40 hours a week at minimum, so.
That's great. Make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept her as a full-time firefighter paramedic.
Second. All in favor? That's great, thank you. This... Supposed to talk about that, or is that...
Um, no, that was just your information. Sharon is, we're meeting with Michelle tomorrow to tie up all the details.
Okay, so she's got, gotta come in and do all the paperwork and all that?
Yes, yeah, she's already seen that information.
Okay, table the foreclosure properties, no update. Fire chief add, deadline June 10th, no update. Jim Dorr, no update. Banned properties, no update. Court orders, August 2, 2016, okay. New, uh, new business, sign the June 14th, 2016 town warrant.
So it's not ready, because you changed the article. So if you want to make a motion to sign it as, as approved, and as, as you've recommended for all of them, we'll certainly make the change, and you can either stay for five minutes and sign them individually, or come in during the week. But, I mean, I had no idea what type of change we were gonna make, so, to type in those recommendations. But now that you've made them, again, you can make the motion to sign it in a public meeting, and we'll get it ready for you to sign.
And then we meet the deadline to have it posted, correct?
Yes, as long as you stay for five minutes and sign it.
I'll make a motion, we sign the town warrant as presented tonight and amended.
Second. All in favor? All right. June 15th, 2016, meeting.
So, I guess I'm the one to give a little background here. Bill, I'm not sure that, you're probably the only one that doesn't have any information on this yet, so. Ed contacted me probably a week or so ago, and if you recall, Mr. Walsh indicated some time ago, that, actually a year in advance, that he was not gonna be at town meeting this year, he had a personal commitment. So with that said, as he was going over things in his mind, he called me and said that he would like to schedule a Board of Selectmen's meeting on Wednesday, June 15th, the day after the election, just in case, he did not make any insinuations that there would be any changes in the selectman race, but just in case there was a change in the selectman seat, he wanted to make sure that whatever board was gonna be presenting at the town meeting on that Saturday had a half hour to meet together and review the warrant. Okay, that was a request, that I post that meeting, simply say the Board of Selectmen will meet at such and such time on the 15th.
Yeah, and it was just, it was a, you know, a thought of something I thought we, we might want to consider doing, so.
I ran that by the chair, and here we are. It was not agreed upon.
Oh, wasn't, that it wasn't agreed upon, I said we discussed, we'd have to bring it up here. So, what do you think, Bill, do you want to have a meeting on June 15th? To discuss the warrant, it'd be the day after the election?
I have no problem with it.
Okay, you can schedule a meeting.
Okay, what time?
Do the regular 5:00 as usual?
15th is what?
It's the Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. Does that work okay for you, or?
Uh, 4:00 would work better.
We can do that, 4:30. I can't get here for 4:00.
Okay.
All right, liquor license. We held the hearing last week, nobody got up to speak. The Fire Department's happy with all the inspection?
Yes, two weeks ago, Saturday morning, my station captain went and met with the owner, had a wonderful conversation, walked through, everything is at the state level what needs to be, all of his inspections, very clean, neat and tidy, even asked in regards to an OX box, and getting us updated information and everything, so. We're fine, me and Rick are very happy with, with the conversations we had with him and everything, and he's very cooperative, and I feel there's no issues.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and we didn't have any issues with the police report, so, anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the liquor license for, what's the exact name of the organization?
The Shed Restaurant.
The Shed Restaurant.
You second it, Bill? Second. All in favor? There you go. Got any other business? Okay, public comment, the floor is open.
Wearing those hats. The Warren and Finance Committee met in good faith, within the time limit that we were given, to make our recommendations. We made recommendations on a warrant that we were told was final. Our committee was clear a number of times that we were unwilling to recommend on articles that were not finalized. What has happened here this evening is that, after recommendations were made by an elected committee, by the town's body, warrant articles that we in good faith made recommendations to have been changed. It is poor government, at its very least. I would request that, I understand the email that came back from MMA. We did not hear, however, the beginning of that email, we only heard the ending. I did not hear the words, "We recommend you do this." I heard the words, "This is an option if you wish to pursue it." I would ask that, on behalf of the Warren and Finance Committee I'm asking, that MMA be asked directly if we have met in good faith to make recommendations on what we were told was a finalized warrant, and the select board chose to change the warrant after those recommendations have been made, if we as the Warren and Finance Committee have the authority to re-recommend. As a citizen of the Town of Acton, we have very clear rules about posting of warrants, we have clear rules about how many days those warrants need to be posted, we have a rule about how warrant articles can be changed, and I in no way disagree that the select board has the authority to write the warrant. That is very clear in main state statute. But it is not the sort of government that I think is best for any group of people to have warrant articles that can be changed in the way that happened this evening. And I really wish that the board had behaved differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Larissa. Anybody else? No? Okay. Uh, announcements. DOT hearing for Route 109, 6:00 PM, May 26th, you're gonna be doing from...
They've changed the plan, so they've asked that we...
Oh, are they still gonna have the meeting?
They're still having the meeting, but they've changed some of the areas, so let's just stick to a Route 109 project, until they, that day comes and goes.
We're gonna have a Personnel Policy Department workshop, 4:00 PM on May 31st. And all department heads are being invited, correct?
All department heads that have employees affected by the personnel policy.
Okay. Uh, the election, absentee ballots in town meetings?
Just a reminder of the dates. Election is on June 14th, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Town meeting starts at 9:00 AM at the school, and absentee ballots are available during regular office hours.
And the clover ride?
You've got that in the mail, it's kinda cute.
Nassau Community Bicycle Center. Dear Board of Selectmen, the Nassau Community Bicycle Center will again be hosting the Four Leaf Clover Ride on Sunday, September 18th, 2016. We are riding as part of the route, we'll be traveling through your town, and we would like to keep you informed of our plans. We have a goal of 100 cyclists participating, with one group leaving at 7:00 AM, and then a second leaving a half an hour later at 7:30, uh, Sunday morning. The bike riders will be riding one to four 25-mile loops. Each route starts and ends at the Nassau Community Center in Springvale. Each group will tend to further separate as the rider's speed varies, and typically riders will be riding individually or in small groups. The riders will be instructed to follow all the rules of the road, and stop at stop signs and red lights. In Acton, riders will be traveling Fox's Ridge Road, Milton Mills Road, and Route 109. We would like to involve the town in our planning process. Last year's ride went well with no serious incidents, and we would like to repeat this record year. We would particularly like to know of any road closures or paving projects before our September 18th date. You're probably gonna need this, Chief? You guys are probably gonna need this for whoever's on duty that day, you're gonna have all these cyclists bobbling through town. You got one?
No.
You can have it. Yeah, you can have it. All right. All right, anything else? A motion?
Seconded.
All in favor?